At this time, we'll move into our agenda for the council meeting. Would you please stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance to the flag and then the invocation given by Counselor Boone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Lord, thank you for this evening and this time together when we come together to do business for the city of Prattville. Thank you for each person here, and I just pray that you would place your wisdom upon them, that you would give us strength and wisdom to do what is best for those who are in the city of Prattville and the surrounding areas. Help us to do business quickly and smoothly tonight. Bless those who are away from us, take care of our mayor and Mr. Wood if they are trouble on behalf of the city, and help them to learn much and come back with new ideas and vigilance and energy just to take us forward, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. I call the city council meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood. Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
We have a quorum present. The character trait of this month is hospitality, cheerfully sharing food, shelter, and friendship with others. Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the council meeting held on November the 4th and the public hearing held on November the 4th.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Is anyone present in the audience tonight that would like to comment on anything concerning tonight's agenda, that's on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll move forward. As you heard, the mayor and Councilman Wood are out of town on city business. We certainly wish them well in their travels and hope they safely return to us. There will not be a mayor's report this evening, but there is a request for a point of privilege which is granted to Senator Chambliss.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. It feels a little odd and awkward to stand on this side tonight, but I'm here to offer my assistance to the city in whatever way I can in my role as senator and to help with any projects or problems or issues that I can or that you need help with state agencies. Please feel free to call on me, and I look forward to continuing to work for the citizens of the city of Prattville in the manner that I have. And I'll have a few other people, but a few other counties and cities, but I just wanted to come tonight and just, you know, just let you know it's a little bittersweet for me. I will miss my time sitting with you guys and really come to know and appreciate each of you, and I just thank you for that time. Again, if there's anything that I can do on behalf of the citizens of Prattville, please just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? We do appreciate your help and look forward to future assistance. I know you've got another meeting. If you need to go ahead and slip out, we understand that. At this time, we'll hear reports on special committees. Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
No, sir.
Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir. On behalf of Parks and Recreation Committee, we are pleased to announce that our Christmas tree has been set up. It is located in its new location this year, which is Heritage Park, which is down at the end of the street in the curve. If you have not seen it yet, we're very excited about our tree lighting this year. It will be on Tuesday night, this coming Tuesday, one week from this evening, at 6:00 PM. Hope you will all come down and join us. And just as a special note, the tree came from city property this year at no expense to the city. It was found by some of our diligent city employees who are out scoping for a tree. So we're real pleased that it's homegrown and set up, and we will see you next Tuesday evening.
Thank you. During the past two weeks, the wastewater committee met. All members were present, including five guests. Bids have been received on two major budgeted capital improvements at the Pine Creek facility. These projects have been under consideration for several years, but the committee did not want to move forward until there was a very high degree of confidence that these improvements would be fully compatible and completely integrated into any future plant upgrade. As a committee, we've now reached this comfort level. Any additional information, additional information will be available for you in the next two weeks, and a resolution to award bids will be offered at the December meeting. At this time, we will hear a report on the city finances. Mr. Mosley.
The monthly reports for the month of October are in front of you. The first sheet in the packet is the revenue report for the month of October. You will notice the way it's set up is the monthly amount is the actual amount that came in. Year-to-date amount is the accrued, has the accruals taken out of it. You'll notice that for the month of October, city revenues were up by 6.25%, which is very strong. The next sheet in the packet is the monthly tax breakdown comparison showing different line items and taxes, where we are compared to last year at this point. You will notice that we, I've added down at the bottom a line for the lodging fee. The reasoning for that is I've taken the capital projects and special revenue fund revenues out of the revenue report, so it just shows the general fund, so it gives a more clear picture of just what the general fund's doing. What I'll start doing is every two or three months, have a special individual report for the special revenue fund and one for the capital projects ones, so they kind of live like their own, on their own, as we do with the wastewater and sanitation funds. The next sheet in the packet is the expense reports for the general fund. This also just has the general fund in it, does not have capital projects or special revenue in it. For the month of, you'll see, just like on the revenue report, the monthly amount is the total amount of expenses for the month. Year-to-date has the payroll accruals and other accruals taken out. We are running right on track with where we should be for the month of October. Total budget that we've spent so far is 6.18%, and we are 8.33% through the year. The next sheet in your packet is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. Again, just as with the other reports, you'll see the monthly amount for October, and then the year-to-date has accruals taken out of it. One thing that I've added on the special, the enterprise fund and special revenue funds sheets is, at the bottom of that sheet, you'll see all the accounts in that fund and the balance as of October 31st, 2014. I will include that on all the months. It's a one sheet snapshot of what the fund looks like. The next sheet in your packet is the sanitation enterprise fund, set up the same way with the bank account balance at the bottom. We are running right on track with the revenues as well. The next sheet in the packet is the judicial fund. It again is set up the same way with the account balance at the bottom. Then we have the bank account balances report, which shows all city accounts. You will notice that as of October 31st, 2014, the balance of all city accounts was $10,956,360.41. You will see a slight decrease in the wastewater funds. This is due to payment of the SRF in that fund. You also see a slight decrease in some of the debt reserves on the general fund. That is, we had to move money over to pay off the 2007. We had to move it over at the end of October, and it gets paid out November 1st. So that brings us to the last sheet, which is the citywide accounts payable and debt balances. You will see that as of October 31st, 2014, the balance of all city account, all city You will also notice that the 2004 SRF is zeroed out. Next month, you will also see the $2,150,000 gone for the 2007 EDI bond. In reference to the payoff of the 2004 SRF, the goal behind that is, we all know that there's a major upgrade to Pine Creek that's coming very fast, and the goal is to get the wastewater enterprise fund debt-free before we step off into this project. It's going to be a very large project, and we want to be financially stable in that fund before we kind of step off into that.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Any questions? Thank you. This evening, we have the opportunity for a consent agenda that would include four resolutions. The first being to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Resolution number two, to reappoint Willis Bradford to the library board. Resolution number three, to approve disclosure, controls, and procedures in certain related matters. Resolution four, to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, as amended. At this point, we have this opportunity before us. Do I hear a motion to place these items on a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of placing these items on the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Will there be any discussion on any of these items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, chair calls for a question. All those in favor of the motion, no. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, motion carries. First item on our agenda, resolution to declare a council vacancy in City Council District Five. Counselor Boone, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas Counselor Clyde Chambliss resigned from City Council District Five effective Wednesday, November 5th, 2014, and whereas the city council of the city of Prattville intends to appoint a qualified person to fill this vacancy and serve the remainder of the unexpired term, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that a vacancy is hereby declared in the city council District Five. Be it further resolved that the city council authorizes the city clerk to accept letters of intent and resumes, I'm sorry, and resumes from qualified applicants of city council District Five from Monday, December 1st, 2014 through Monday, December 15th, 2014, at 5:00 PM. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Resolution number two, to rescind the procedure established in Resolution Book 2013, page 140, requiring council authorization for the hiring of previously non-filled or newly budgeted positions. Counselor Bowles, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution Book 2010, page 181, adopted on October 19th, 2010, required city council authorization to fill vacant positions. And whereas Resolution Book 2013, page 104, adopted on September 17th, 2013, rescinded the need for the city council to authorize to fill vacant in previously staff-budgeted positions, but required councils authorization to fill previously non-filled or newly budgeted positions prior to advertisement of the position. And whereas the city council desires to rescind the need for the city council to authorize to fill the budgeted employed positions of the city Prattville, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the requirement for the city council authorization to fill vacancies in previously non-filled or newly budgeted positions prior to the advertisement of the position is hereby resented. I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Resolution number three, to enter into an agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to provide traffic engineering services for SCOUT adaptive signal control technology systems on Cobb's Ford Road from Shady Oak Lane to I-65 at a cost not to exceed $75,000. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville has identified the need for an adaptive signal control system on Cobb's Ford Road from Shady Oak Lane to I-65, and whereas the city of Prattville has entered into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to have this work performed, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation requires traffic engineering services for this work, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation has approved Sane Associates Incorporated to perform these duties, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will fund the construction of the system through ATRP project number ACA-A61204-ATRP009, and whereas this is a budgeted expense, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to perform traffic engineering services for project number ACA-A61204-ATRP009 at a cost not to exceed $75,000, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2015 budget line item capital project fund miscellaneous contract services. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the city of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the city of Prattville. I so move, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Ordinance number four, to surplus various equipment from the police department. Counselor Starnes, will you introduce this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the city council, the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the equipment listed in attachment A is hereby declared surplus to the police department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Be it further ordained, the city council instructs the mayor to sell said equipment through govdeals.com, and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Before we can vote on this, we must suspend the rules. All those in favor need a motion to suspend?
Need a motion to suspend. I make a motion to suspend.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on suspending the rules? Those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, motion carries. This concludes our agenda for the evening. At this time, we'll entertain comments from persons present. Come forward, please. If you would state your name and address for the clerk.
I'm Ginger Burton. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Prattville Ataga Humane Society, and my address is 549 Golson Road, 36067. This is Wendy Irvin, and I'll explain in a minute how we know Wendy. Thank you for letting us speak to you tonight. The Board of Directors for the Prattville Ataga Humane Society is a volunteer group. None of us are paid employees. In late 2002, we opened our shelter under the name the Ataga County Humane Shelter. We later changed our name to the Prattville Ataga Humane Shelter to indicate that we had funding from the city and the county. At that time, when we opened, our maximum capacity was 85 animals. It's still 85 animals. Within five days of opening in 2002, we were over capacity. We have never once been under capacity since that date. As you can see by the shelter report, our numbers are climbing and they're astronomical. Large numbers of these animals are coming from the city of Prattville. As you probably know, any stray that is brought into the shelter, we must by state law hold for seven days before we can deem the animal adoptable or not adoptable. Our intake each month ranges between 200 and 275 animals. If an animal is in evidence in court case, neglect, abuse, or dogfighting, we cannot do anything with that animal until the case is closed. So sometimes we have animals that we have to keep much longer. We are a 501(c)(3). We are trying to provide a service for the city of Prattville and Ataga County, but the explosive growth in the city of Prattville means that we no longer feel like we're adequately meeting the needs of the people of Prattville and the citizens of Ataga County. In January 2010, we formed the No Room for Rover Kennel Expansion Fund. At that time, we had less than $9,000 in that account. We worked, we did fundraisers, contests, grants, everything you can think of. In spring of 2012, we decided that we needed to get a reasonable estimate of what we needed to build and what it would cost to build. That's when Wendy Irvin, who is also volunteering all of her time for us, residential designer with Aaronoff, came in. We talked to her, we told her what our needs were, and she came up with a building plan for us, very crude, but she said, "You can't get this done for less than $150,000." Well, when we heard that number, we knew we were nowhere close. So we went back into the fundraising contest and grant writing mode. In January of 2014, Wendy has a friend, Jeff Ribnick, from Fortson, Georgia. He is associated with Earthwood Studio. For $100, he drew up our architectural plans that met specifications. We thought that was a pretty good deal, and it was, I think, a favor to Wendy that we got it for that. Our expansion will be 1,377 square feet of covered runs, 1,453 square feet of heated indoor area. The heated indoor area will include a cat room, a medical room. The reason, we do not have a vet on staff. We do have three certified euthanasia technicians. We also use the medical room not only for euthanasia, but for microchipping, getting the pets that will be adoptable up to date on all vaccines except rabies, and for any medical exams that are done by the traveling vet from Tuskegee University. We will also have a laundry and bathing area, a small dog and puppy room, that will be one room, and then we will have the 18 outdoor kennels. We are basically doubling our space. We're basically doubling what we can hold. The total square footage will be 2,830 square feet. In the September board meeting of this year, the board voted to hire Donnie Summerlin with SDS Properties from Montgomery as our general contractor. He looked again at what we wanted, and unfortunately, the build price that you have in your hands now is $173,141. We are working very hard. They're out there now, we've gotten the walls up, and we have raised $146,981.11. When you consider that we didn't have $10,000 in 2010, that represents a lot of work on a small group of volunteers. We have written grants, but unfortunately, most grants are for items, washers, dryers, microscopes, vaccines, microchips, spay neutering, but most grants cannot be written for a permanent structure. We had to break ground before we could apply for the one grant that would help us, and that's the Alabama Power Foundations Grant. We have applied for that, we have asked for help for them. We applied earlier in the year, and they rejected our application because we'd not broken ground. We will not hear from them until the 1st of January. We want to tell the city council how much we appreciate your $80,000 in operational funding. We couldn't do it without it. We spend every cent of it on the care, medical care, and taking care of the animals, and on payroll. We felt like we needed to also break ground before we could come and respectfully ask for funding from you. So we're at the point now where we're asking for you to consider giving us $15,000 to help us complete this building without having to take out a loan. Building completion will be by the 1st of January. And we also would encourage any of you that have not been, come out, please tour the old building, tour the new building, meet our staff, see the animals. We think you'll see that the need is there, and we're working really hard to meet the services of your constituents. If you have any construction questions, and Wendy would like to do a couple of closing remarks about what is not included in the building.
When we first estimated the building cost, of course, was two years ago, and over the course of two years, and actually fine tuning, you know, every detail of what will go into the building, will explain the increase in cost. This cost is actually nowhere near what it truly would cost to build it. All of the subcontractors that are involved have donated in one way or another. Either their suppliers are donating goods, all the way down to just piping for plumbing. The subcontractors, a lot of them are donating some of their time. They've basically crunched their numbers as small as they can make them to make it possible. So not just the city of Prattville citizens and the county citizens that have all donated at one point or another, or at least a great deal of them have, to make this $146,000 possible, but even the workers that are out there on the job right now are donating too. If there's any kind of construction-related questions, I'm here, I can leave a set of plans with you guys to look at. I just don't see how, when these folks have worked as hard as they have, this project would not have been possible at all without all of the work that they've put in over these last four years. I'm very proud of them. But if you guys have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Ginger, am I correct that you've already been to the county, and they did agree to give?
$50,000, okay.
Okay.
Thank you both for your efforts, and thank you for your presentation, and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else that would like to address the council? If not, at this time, we'll move into comments, excuse me, closing comments from the council. Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
No, sir.
I do have one or two items. I would like to express congratulations to Barbara Simpson on having her painting selected for a showing in New York. I think that's very admirable, not only for her, but well represents the city of Prattville. And I also express appreciation to all of you city personnel for your continued efforts in making Prattville successful. You are the primary contact with our citizens, and how they perceive you is their perception of this community. Keep up the good work. Also wish each of you a very happy Thanksgiving, and a reminder that the deadline for the agenda for our next meeting, the deadline is Monday, December 13. agenda for our next meeting, the deadline is Monday, December, excuse me, November the 24th at 5:00 PM, which is next week. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December the 2nd at 6:00 PM. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed can stay.